All right, can you hear me now?
All right, I can hear you.
Oh, we'll have a delay. Good evening, everybody, I believe I can see is here. Don Miller and myself are at Town Hall. Everyone else is online, but I just want to make sure everyone can hear. Our call is being ordered, but first I would like to say, Jim Nailitz, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you, just a little bit faint.
Okay, thank you, I'll speak up. Jeff Waters, I can't see you, but can you hear?
I can hear you loud and clear.
All right, I can hear you as well. Commissioner King.
You're loud and clear, Mayor.
All right, I can hear you as well. Commissioner Mark.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, we can hear you as well, so everybody can be heard. And so we shall start the meeting off with the, let Zach get back to the office. We'll pull up the American flag, and we shall do the pledge of allegiance. My head will lead the screen for a moment as I stand up straight for this. So if everybody will prepare yourself, soon as we get the flag up on the screen, we will begin.
I got him now, on the phone.
Okay.
Ready?
All right. We'll go ahead.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic from which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation. With liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks gentlemen. Commissioner Waters, would you please do an invocation for us? If everybody would please remain standing.
I would precious and happy Father Lord, we come to you tonight in your name, Jesus. We thankful you are, you many of you have bestowed upon us. Father, now we're going to our meeting tonight at the Town Hall, Board of Commissioners, that you give us the courage, us wisdom, and understanding as we go through our agenda tonight. Let us be a help to others, our community be better than ever. Thank you, Jesus, what you done, what you going to do, in your name, Jesus, we pray.
Thank you, Commissioner Waters. While we're still standing, I would just like to have a moment of silence. We had two citizens that passed away recently, which was Peter Demarest and Jack Quick. So a moment of silence, please, for those who have passed in our community. All right, thanks gentlemen. First thing on the agenda is to accept the agenda, but first I would like to add an item. We'll make it number nine, which is Commissioner's comments that was left off the agenda. We need to put that back on, so we'll have that as our last thing. So I'll accept the motion to accept that addition and the. Don Miller has moved, you'll have a second.
Second.
Okay, we got a second, so I will just do a roll call vote for everything this evening, as we've been doing with these special meetings. I'll start with Don. Commissioner Nailitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters? Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
All right, with that, we have two people that are here in person that are going to have comment forward, and we're going to bring them in, like we did last time. Appreciate everybody preparing with us during these times, and we're trying to make sure everybody who does not have the ability to get online and rest, we're providing that for them here at that earlier, the only person here at Town Hall, myself, Don Miller, and we'll be speaking forward, and everybody at the big screen behind me there. And we're going to bring them in now, and let me put my mask on and check if you would. I think first up is Mr. Truatt.
Hello, Mayor, how are you? Mr. Miller? Okay, thank you. Let me start off by thanking you for this time of the evening. My notes here. I present the county part of Iowa. During that time, and especially in recent times, I've noticed town's inability to take care of the roads, parks, and road. Photograph, and the road to shipping each of you. Lack of maintenance here and untimely repair. Briefly on the outline, though, Bog Sound Drive has been closed since the rainstorm June 17th. Residents, school buses, mail carriers, trucks, and others have to wait, have to divert to Lejeune to get over to Bog Sound. Lejeune Road was dug up over a month ago, and it's on. So we have two issues in that area. Bog Sound Park's new camo, front of the bulkhead, washed out during the hurricane on August 4th. It was repaired last week, or a month. It was left in disrepair. The picnic tables removed from the storm have not. The park is used more than most of, has been mowed and maintained by local residents for many years, as the town has failed to do so. The same holds true for the park at the pier at the end of Bay Shore Drive. It was weeded this past week, by the time I might mention, but no picnic tables have returned to that area. These parks, while used year-round, have been neglected during the peak of our summer season. I have repeatedly reported four unlicensed and junk cars at a residence at the corner of Edgewater and Bog Sound. This has been an eyesore and a potential health hazard for years. Nothing apparently has or is going to be done with this violation of the town ordinance. The mulch dumped for the trail on Highway 24 laid there in Iowa's world over a month before the town started to spread it out. That project is still not finished, and quite naturally, the trail is seldom if ever used. It is going to be difficult for me to vote in favor of the trail referendum when the town doesn't take care of the limited one in place now. The right of way along 24, unless mowing the group of businesses that front the highway, is unsightly and presents a poor image of the town when traveling west into Cape Cod West. Meanwhile, time and resources mismanaged and misspent mowing and maintaining the right of way on 58 all the way to the bridge through Emerald Isle. Now, we have facts and rumors whirling around concerning the possibility of the town purchasing the old ferry landing property across the street from me. It is a shame the way the adjoining property owners and neighborhood came to find out about this potential purchase. With the exception of Town Hall and the public works facilities, the town is not demonstrating to take care of what it currently has, let alone add more to its workload. It is time the town considers contracting out some of the public works maintenance on a seasonal basis. I encourage each of you to get out, drive around, and see for yourselves these issues. I'd be glad to send you photos to your town email address. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Jim, you want to just send one on air?
Hello, man. Hey, how y'all doing?
Good, good.
What's the phone? Is that my phone? Oh, okay. All righty. Hi, I'm Minnie Truatt, owner of Cape Cod West on Lejeune Road. Mr. Mayor Baker and Commissioners, I'm here that our town needs to buy our property for. Important thing to do, being a waterfront. Is the, Phil, can you get these out, please? And the other Commissioners can get a copy. I'm providing a copy of the plan on Lejeune Road that most of the Bay Shore homeowners know of, and this is not the right way for them to. And, Mayor Baker and Commissioners, Steffi did this draw for owner for their use, which was provided. A concerned citizen on Lejeune Road. Also, this is for Commissioner King, Mike King. I don't think one Commissioner should be out and going out about and asking landowners if they want to sell their water and, and not handpick landowners, as you have. Mayor Baker and Commissioners, this should be open to the public, if anybody would like to sell their waterfront. And so I'm here to say, I think we should do that, but we need to do it in a proper manner. There's going to be one Commissioner walking around with a hat, just if they want to sell their land. And that's what I'm here about. And like I said, that right there was subject to Steffi for a resident of Lejeune Road in the town time. So that's all I've got to say. I hope y'all stay safe. Thanks, Commissioners.
You too.
You too, thank you.
Just one second, gentlemen. Turn the screen, ready. All right, I guess we need to direct her. Okay. All right, as soon as Zach gets back to his office, he's headed that way now, the item on the agenda is the Carteret County Schools Superintendent, Dr. Rob Jackson. And Dr. Jackson is joining us live here, just one second, Doctor, and we'll head on there.
Thank you, sir.
Once again, I apologize for some of the delays, but we're having to do things a little different until we get out of these phases. Zach, you back?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, you'd like to do an official introduction for the doctor?
Yes, we have Dr. Jackson with the Carteret County School System with us this evening. I'll hand it over to Dr. Jackson to say a couple words, and we thank him for being here this evening with us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, pro tem, Commissioners, I just want to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to spend just a few moments with you. My wife and Renee and I moved into Carteret County July 1st, and have been absolutely blessed to be a part of this community. One of the things that I very quickly learned was the pride the school system has in its close working relationship with each of the municipalities across Carteret County. And so it was important for me to take just a few moments to reach out to each of the town councils, boards of commissioners, and the municipalities across Carteret County to share with you my commitment and the commitment of our Board of Education to work with each municipality. We are underway with our school year, it's a school year unlike any of us have probably experienced in the past. Our students are attending on a hybrid schedule, some parents opted into 100% remote schedule. About 70% of our students are attending two days in person and three days remote. We are underway, and again, just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself and share with you my commitment to working with Cape Cod West, with the town manager, with the Board of Commissioners, and let you know that I and the school system stand ready and available to assist in any way that we might with the town. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening with you, and be happy to answer any questions the Commissioners have, or take my leave as you would direct.
All right, well first, I just want to say welcome to Carteret County, Doctor, and we're sure glad to have you. And I'll ask if the Board members have any questions. And if not, sir, thank you once again. Being stuck around, though, is exciting. And, you know, but if not, I'm sure you have better things to do, like dinner, perhaps.
Not better, but certainly other things. Thank you so much for the invitation, I appreciate you, thank you, sir.
Thank you once again, Doctor, for the introduction, good luck.
Thank you.
That's the one thing I hear consistently, is schools here are top-notch and number one, and so that, I think that's great. That's why a lot of people want to live here. Can't blame them, I'm here because it is. All right, so we're moving on with the agenda. And the next item. Is staff update. Who's Zach?
All righty, not too much going on on our end. You know, the, just an update on the Bog Sound Drive project is the West Carteret Water Corporation on Wednesday is going to be replacing the water line. So after they, after they move forward on that replacement in that section above the culvert, we'll be able to fill that back in and pave that area. Over on Lejeune Road, that area that was dug out, we'll also be patching that section. The plan is to do the patch on Bog Sound and Lejeune Road at the same time while we have all the equipment mobilized for that. So hopefully that's coming up either this week or next week. So we're all eager to see that get completed, and something that our public works department has been working hard on getting done. We're continuing to monitor a number of systems out in the Atlantic, so we're watching that very closely. So that's one of our top priorities right now. Obviously, with all the activity we have out there, you know, we're continuing to do whatever we need to do to be prepared for that, including, you know, with the picnic tables at the parks, those have not been put back out because of the threat of potential tropical systems. Same thing with the military banners, is that we've been waiting to put those back up until the threat out there in the Atlantic has been, has been abated. So I'm hoping in the next week or two, maybe things will start to calm down, so we can put everything back in place, but instead of rushing to put it out and take it back up. Let's see if I can use my mic.
Zach, I'm looking on the screen, and I see a lot of microphones that are activated. You may want to tell the people to cut their mics off.
Everybody could try to mute your microphones. Unless it's coming from, might be coming from the mic in the boardroom, let's see. Yeah, I think that's where it will. I think that's where that was. That's pretty much all I have this evening. You know, like I say, we're just closely monitoring all those systems that are out there, and, you know, just making sure that we're prepared for those, and, you know, just continuing to move, move forward and move the town in a good direction, and take care of these various projects that we have going on right now, so. And I believe Chief McKinney, I believe he's probably still there in the boardroom, so I'll hand it off to him to give an update from the police department.
The guys that been on the road, that worked the road hard. Multiple citations. They made four DWI arrests in the past 10 days. Sergeant Walden, this week, received his advanced certificate on trend and standards. And the monthly posts are on the website, if you want to go to Cape Cod Police Department website, they give some of the stats for the past month. And that's part about you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. All right, that's all we got from the staff updates, and we'll move on to the next item in agenda number seven, the Deer Creek Tribute Terry Dredging Project. Zach?
All righty, can everybody see that on your screens? The memorandum?
I still see the flag in here.
Okay.
No, by the way.
Can the folks at home, can y'all see the memo on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, it must just be a little bit delayed in the boardroom, so I'll go ahead and get started on that. At the August 10th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting, the Board requested that town staff reach out to the property owners along the Deer Creek Tributary to determine the number of property owners who would be interested in participating in the project. The town circulated a letter to the property owners as well as an email describing the proposed project. The town received responses from all but one of the property owners along the creek. Based on the anticipated project cost, a sample breakdown of the proposed cost share arrangement is outlined below. And just an update since this memo had gone out, we did receive the final response from the property owner, which was favorable in participating and paying their fair share of the project. So the breakdown for the project would be total project cost of 210,000, a state grant portion of 140,000, and a local portion of 70,000. Then, based on some conversations with the county, our hope would be that the county would contribute 35,000. And then between the town of Cape Codarette and the property owners, we would split it 50/50, so the town would pay 17,500. And the property owners that would benefit from the project would pay 17,500. Breaking that down a little bit further, we've got 17,500 minus 1,000, which would be what the memorandum would pay towards the project, which reduces the cost of 17,500. Divide that by 30 parcels, so we're looking at around $550 per parcel. Some of the property owners indicated that they are willing to pay specific amounts, while others have indicated that they are willing to pay more than their fair share to see the project come to fruition. Based on the responses that we received, each parcel would be responsible for roughly $582.69. That was based off of some people wanted to pay just the 550, others wanted to pay more and indicated how much more they would pay. So that would be about what would be charged for each property owner. The attached spreadsheet has that information on there as a breakdown of what each property owner is willing to pay. Town staff suggests that the property owners gather the funds among themselves and then write one check either to the town of Cape Codarette or to Codarette County for 17,500 to cover the property owner's share of the project. The town's portion of the cost share arrangement would be 17,500 based on the cost allocation scenario that I just provided. If the Board of Commissioners would like to move forward with the town's match, then a budget amendment would be needed to establish 65.923 waterway dredging in the Parks and Recreation section of the FY 2020-2021 budget. And the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the proposed budget amendment to establish 65.923 in the Parks and Recreation section of the budget and to transfer 17,500 from the undesignated fund balance to cover the town's share of the dredging project costs. And some of the attachments are the budget amendment, the letter to the property owners that went out, the dredging detail sections, and the property owner responses that we did receive. So here would be the budget amendment 2020.2021.2. And then followed by the letter that was sent out to the property owners along the Deer Creek Tributary. And then these are the detailed sections showing the width of the dredging and different stations along that route. So this provides a little bit further detail, and this was provided and sent out to the property owners. Everybody could see exactly where the proposed dredging would take place. And one note that I will make on this is that on this final sheet here, we have asked that the folks working on the project expand all the way to the end of the canal to pick up that area that's filled in, and I believe that was something they felt they could capture in this project. So that was one slight amendment, was to add that remaining portion there. And here's the tabulation by address of what each person indicated that they would be willing to pay on a preliminary basis. So that's pretty much all the information we have on it, I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, well, first Zach, our screen just blank in here, is it the same way for everybody, or is it just us? If we can still be heard, we'll continue.
Yeah, I think it's just, y'all, I can.
As long as we're okay.
Let me, I'll shift in there.
Just one second, everybody.
Taking everybody on a little. We'll just cut that off there. Alright, so just. Yep, there you go. Alright. Everybody still hearing?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright, so what we're left with is, I guess, if someone would like to make a motion, then we can discuss it.
I'll make the motion to adopt the budget amendment for the dredging project on Deer Creek.
Okay, thanks. Have a second? Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Alright, and we'll open discussion up, and we'll start with Jim Nails, if you have anything you'd like to ask or say.
No, I understand that the homeowners have already organized and have a sort of treasurer who will be able to gather that money together and have opened an account, I think for our citizens or someplace. You mentioned there about paying or having a check go to either the town or the county. I guess we have to wait a while to find out what's actually going to happen. I don't know what the status of it is, I noticed that Commissioner Comer is here. They applied for the grant, they have, they know if it's approved. They're willing to. Yeah, just what their notion of the money is going to be.
No, you got it, Jim? Okay, Commissioner Waters, comments?
Yeah, I think this is something that's been good for the town moving forward, it's going to be a town for value purposes or tax later on for some of the money that we've been spending on this, also for the folks in the boats and the waters and adding very much to our town for today. I'm excited to see this moving forward.
Alright, thank you, Jeff, Commissioner Martin?
Yes, I think this is a chance for us to show that we are willing to help our neighbors clean up a waterway that was once flowing without obstruction. And it's only the right thing to do here, and I'm happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Commissioner King? Hang on, Mike, we're not muting, mute, mute. There we go, okay, Mike, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, again, supportive of this project. You've got a waterway that's being subsidized by the town in an area that the people have more than the ability to pay that, yet we don't get the Manatee Street Boat Ramp dug out where it's about two feet, and we have 450-some people using that thing on a regular basis all summer. So I'm just not supportive of this. People in the past have taken care of their own canal and waterfront properties. I've dredged mine at my expense three times since 1997, so I don't know that we should be subsidizing this neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, Commissioner, Don?
I am in support of the project, I think it's a long way to go, but I think it's fortunate that we do have property owners. A couple of them that are all very much willing to participate in this, and I think all in all, it's going to be a good thing. As I said last month when we talked about it, just because we're doing it for this one area doesn't mean that we're going to have to do it for every area that comes up. If we have the same opportunity come up again, where we have a grant, we have county putting in money, and we're only having to cover a portion of it. And then we possibly could be looking at other property owners, did they want to do this? But I don't think we're committing ourselves that every time somebody wants to get their area dredged, that the town's going to have to be the one there to do it, so I'm in support of it.
Alright, well, with that, we'll go ahead and call for a vote then, we'll do roll call vote, and we'll start with.
Mr. Mayor. Morning, Mr. Mayor.
I got you, Steve, forgive me. Go ahead.
I'd like to add one, I'd like to respond to Commissioner King's concerns about not dredging the Manatee Boat Ramp, which is totally off-topic, but I feel like I can. I just want to point out that Bay Shore Park Boat Ramp was not included also, and I think if the town wants to dredge Manatee, we should take some of the $37,000 net profit we've received off of that ramp use and do it on our own, that's all I have one to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Alright, well, we had the motion and we had the second, now we'll do the vote, and I'll start with Commissioner Nails.
Yes.
Yes for Commissioner Nails. Don?
Yes.
Yes, it's two yeses. Commissioner King?
No.
It's one though. Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters? That's a yes, so motion passes four to one. I'd like to thank Commissioner Comer, who's on here from the county, if I understand correctly, if the sales tax passes and a lot of this is a moot point, then it'll probably be covered with the generated income from that, so I just want to remind people how important your vote is when it comes to things like that and looking after our waterways. Okay, well, that being said, we'll move right on down the agenda item, in which I believe next up is the closed session. So I will entertain a motion to go out of the regular session into a closed session to discuss a personal matter.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so, you know, so, I think.
I'll say it.
Okay, so Steve motioned, okay, and we'll do a roll call vote, hold in favor, Mr. Waters? Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Nails?
Yes.
Gonna miss anybody?
Me.
Hey, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Don. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
I'm trying to keep my notes here going, okay, so with that, ladies and gentlemen, if you're watching, I'm sorry.
And just before we cut off, I'll be, I'll send a link out to all of the Commissioners, like we have in the past, so it'll be in your inbox as soon as we wrap up.
Right, so we'll be going to another page, and we'll be coming back here though to adjourn, we'll be coming back here, so if you're a guest, like Brad, just hang out, and we'll be back as soon as the closed session's over. So give us about, gentlemen, if you would, take about five minutes to get everything set up, and you'll get your invitation to the closed session spot. Thank you, gentlemen.